I'd like to call the Wilmington City Council Regular Meeting, May 5th, 2022, to order. May we have roll call, please?
Jonathan McKay.
Here.
Michael Snar.
Here.
Bill Leirman.
Here.
Bob Osborne.
Here.
Michael Albright.
Here.
Nick Eivlin.
Here.
Matt Kirkie.
Here.
Thank you, everyone being present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Legions. All right, Pledge of Legions is the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please join me in a brief moment's silence. Thank you. Under my agenda tonight, you have approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure?
Motion seconded.
Motion seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the meeting minutes of the April 21st meeting. What is your pleasure?
Move that being accepted as presented?
Second.
Motion and seconded by Bob Osborne, thank you, to accept the meeting minutes as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting minutes are accepted. I am also to announce a public hearing for May 19th, 2022, for rezoning of 28.60 acres, owned by Checkers Theaters, Inc., and located at 1057 North Lincoln Street, from SN, which is suburban neighborhood, to TN, which is traditional neighborhood. That will be May 19th. Also, a public hearing for June 16th, 2022, for rezoning of 5.394 acres, more or less, owned by LT Land Development, and located at 1600 West Main Street, and 80 Clark Drive from L1 Light Industrial to SC Suburban Commercial. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I don't know if you take time to read this report, but there was a couple things in here caught my attention. And the yards on our yard mower are starting to stand out now. If you're driving around, you can spot. But I'm gonna quote, "But if you know someone who is having economic hardships or health concerns that are preventing them from maintaining their lawns, this department, code enforcement, is once again partnering with Sherwood Tree Landscaping to help those who are struggling by providing free lawn services. Please contact Annan for information regarding the service." Because we don't want to go out and pick on elderly people or sick people that physically cannot take care of their yard. So this service is available. So if you know of someone, have them contact Annan or give, have Annan. Anyway, Annan's in charge of that.
And they would typically do that free of charge, I think?
Free of charge, that is correct.
That's what I thought.
Also, we've got another cleanup, and I'm so proud of those people that volunteer their Saturdays to go around our city and pick up trash. There's gonna be another one on May 21st at 9:00 a.m. Participants meeting at Sherwood Tree Community Square. All are welcome to attend. No advance signups required. We will continue to work on combating litter in the downtown area. If you have a group that would like to host or help with any other special cleanup activities, contact Annan for more information. Does a very good job, the city. So did Tom Foster, former council member, who sold quality, quality coats. Tom Foster has been close.
Quite a while.
Still in pretty good shape, isn't he? Actually bought it from Kenny Gray. They were parkers.
Yep.
And just an all-around good guy. Community's gonna miss him.
The daisy patch.
Yeah.
The daisy patch.
Yeah, yes. Wilmington Garden Club Plant Sale is Saturday, May 7th. That's the Saturday. It'll be from 9:00 to 12:00 at Clinton County Historical Center in Wilmington. It'll feature a plethora of plants and local vendors. Wilmington Community Blood Drive, Wednesday, May 11th, Clinton Memorial Hospital, early from 12:00 to 6:30. To schedule an appointment, call 937-461-3220. Food for All Mobile Pantry for the Clinton County residents. That's Thursday, May 12th. And that is from 11:00 to 1:00 at St. Clemental Catholic Church, 72 North Mulberry Street. Picture ID is required for registration. Clinton County Farmer's Market returns Saturday, May 14th, from 8:30 to noon, at its new location, the Clinton County Courthouse Square. Due to the current downtown construction project, Farmer's Market will be temporarily located in the courthouse parking lot of Wolf Walnut Street. Wilmington Police Officer Memorial Service is gonna be Monday, May 16th, at 1:00 at Sherwood Grove Cemetery. We gathered at the grave of Patrolman Embry McCray, directly across the bridge from the original section and the new section, which are brand-new completed bridge. Line walk tickets are on sale from Main Street. They're $55, and you can get them at Tintap. I also have a proclamation tonight for Economic Development Week. And Mr. Dan Evans, I saw you in the audience. If you would like to come up and run, I'm gonna present you with this proclamation. I know everybody knows Mr. Evans. He is our economic guru, and we're very proud to have him.
Depends on your games.
Whereas we wish to recognize International Economic Development Council in the week of May 9th to 15th, 2022, as Economic Development Week. Whereas the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers, providing leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners. Whereas the community's economic development outlook includes the city of Wilmington, Clinton County Board of Commissioners, Clinton County Regional Planning Commission, Wilmington Clinton County Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Wilmington, the Downtown Wilmington Community Improvement Corporation, Clinton County Community Improvement Corporation, Clinton County Commissioner and Business Bureau, and the Clinton County Port Authority. And whereas developers promote economic well-being and the quality of life for their communities by facilitating the creation, retention, and expansion of job opportunities, which facilitates growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers help stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. Whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public and private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas economic developers work to aid in the attraction and retention of high-quality jobs, development of vibrant communities, improvements of quality of life in their regions. Now therefore, I, John M. Standforth, Mayor of the city of Wilmington, Ohio, hereby recognize May 9th to 15th, 2022, as Economic Development Week in the city of Wilmington, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and improving life. Well, the mouthful.
That was.
We good?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Back to you, Mr. President.
Okay, I guess you didn't want to read it again, right? I also wanted to mention, there's gonna be a really great show at Murphy Theater tomorrow night, Blessed Union of Souls, which is an awesome group that Mr. Schottiger especially likes. And the reason I mention that is our PM, Redery, is going to be doing the ice cream for that show, so you can enjoy the show and get to shake hands with some great redarians. So I think it's like 7:00 p.m. or so at the Murphy Theater. Hope to see somebody there. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Vance.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Schottiger.
Just really quick, the proclamation, economic development, and we've got something happening in real life right now with economic development as far as our partnership with the Port Authority, Airborne Road. Like, they're wrapping up, literally, as we speak, with Airborne Road. And I can't tell council enough about our partnership with the, I mean, it was over a million dollars, and Mr. Evans and your team helped us with that. I appreciate it.
And we're here, man.
That's why it happened, too. It happened because we worked together on that. Airborne Road is a huge project for us. When I go out in the city, that was the top-two conversation, next to Davis Drive, and it's happening, and it's almost done. So, thank you very much. And that was through working together through economic development, through our partnership, and I appreciate it very much.
We appreciate you and the collaboration.
Thank you. So I have no items this evening, so that's, no, I don't have.
We have no maps?
No, no, I can figure something out.
I wanted a map of Airborne Road.
Yeah, I know, and maybe we could do that if you want, but no maps, nothing. I just wanna say thanks to the port, and we have a lot of construction, things going on, as everybody knows. The whole town is torn up. And I would just remind people, if they have questions, 937-382-6509, call our office. Don't go to Facebook, don't go to Snapchat, don't go to Instagram, don't go to Twitter, don't go. Call, if you have questions, call us, please. That's the quickest way to get information and the quickest way that we can, you know, answer, you know, answer those concerns. Call the office, please. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Sure.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I just comment on the economic development proclamation?
Absolutely.
I was up Washington DC one time and went past the US Department of Commerce, and up on the, in stone, above the front entrances, a saying that says, "What is past is prolonged." And I didn't really know what that meant. When I got back to town, our Economic Development Director for the state of Ohio happened to be in the office. I said, "What does that mean, what is past is prolonged?" He said, "That means you ain't seen nothing yet." And I say that because I don't know the Wilmington has ever been stronger in economic development than they have been. And a lot of it's due to Dan Evans and his personal contribution, but to the Port Authority as well. And I just want to bring that out because there are things happening in this community that I think are gonna really open some people's eyes. And so I just say to you, Dan, thanks, and we know that we ain't seen nothing yet. Keep up the good work.
I am arguably the weakest link in that chain, but it's a fantastic chain, and we're very fortunate. I think you're right about the C X copy. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, but Councilman Eivlin, and thank you for your humbleness, Mr. Evans. But I also agree with his comments.
Thanks.
All right, moving into.
Before you move on?
Yeah.
I wasn't gonna do this, but I'm a grandpa.
Oh, that's right.
And I knew that, and I forgot to mention. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Council Committee reports, Cede Revalorization. Mr. McDann.
We have no official report tonight, but there's gonna be a couple updates coming at the next meeting with retained hotel lodging tax. No funds were doled out last quarter, but there was a meeting this week, and some funds got doled out. And it was the first meeting since everything had been switched around. And the administration, Dr. Vance's office, and Taylor Stuckert were in attendance at that meeting, along with myself and the auditor, and we doled out the first of the funds under the new laws that we enacted from the committee. So that was very exciting, and it was a learning experience for everyone, but we got through it, and I was very pleased with the work that council sent on to the committee, and it's gonna work out okay. So I just wanted to give that update, and then we can talk a little bit about some things at the next meeting. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. City Services, Mr. Eivlin.
Mr. President, we have three items on the agenda this evening, all of them dealing with the transit service. You'll recall last meeting, we passed the legislation necessary to allow the submittal of a grant, it's the operating grant for the taxi service. And apparently, the Department of Transportation decided that there were other aspects to that that needed to be dealt with. And that's what these three ordinances, I'm sorry, three resolutions that we're going to consider this evening, deal with. The first one is that they require us to have a formalized safety plan to submit. And by the way, Jessica Powell is here, and she's gonna have the technical details. And if I stumble through this or say something wrong, please jump up and interrupt me. But we do need to have a formalized safety plan for the transit service. And so that is the first resolution, which is on there. It's been prepared. Now, this is, these are prepared for three readings this evening, which is something really, I know we don't like to do them, and I'd like to have given you more time of this, but unfortunately, it's necessary to submit it prior to the next council meeting. So they requested that the administration, Jessica requested that this be dealt with this evening. We distributed the proposed legislation to the other members of the committee and said if you want to have a meeting on this prior to, we will be glad to convene. And I think Councilman McKay, Councilman Leirman, both agree that it's not necessary to have a meeting. So with that, if there are any questions with regard to the Transit Agency's safety plan, that Jessica can answer and not me?
A lot of work, until I know that much, so thank you for that.
And we will be reviewing this on annual basis.
All right, so if there are no further questions, I'd ask for the first reading on the Resolution 2218. Title only, please.
Second.
Motion by Eivlin, seconded by Leirman. First reading, Resolution 2218. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution adopting the Wilmington Transit Public Transportation Agency's safety plan and declaring emergency. I would move for the suspension of the rules and regulations and give Resolution 2218 second and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
Motion second for suspension of the rules. May we have roll call, please?
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second or third reading, please?
A resolution adopting the Wilmington Transit Public Transportation Agency's safety plan and declaring emergency. And move for passage of the resolution, please.
Second.
Motion second for passage. Roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2218 passes.
The second item is a request for three readings on Resolution 2219, which deals with some covenants and assertions that the city of Wilmington is going to make. And it deals with the things that we've always talked about before, like nondiscrimination and things like that, things that we have to certify that state of Ohio as part of the grant, but separate from it. So it's on a separate resolution, and that's the reason for giving that this evening. Any questions on that? Seeing none, I move for the first reading on 2219 by title only, please.
Second.
Was that Bill?
Yes.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, or excuse me, for the first reading, Resolution 2219. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May we have the first reading, please?
A resolution adopting the Wilmington Transit Title VI Program Plan and declaring emergency. I move for the second or third reading by title only, please.
Second.
Motion second. Motion second for suspension of rules. Roll call, please.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Motion carries. Second, third reading, please.
A resolution adopting the Wilmington Transit Title VI Program Plan and declaring emergency. And move for passage.
Second.
Motion second for passage. Roll call, please.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
And Leirman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 2219 is adopted.
The third item is actually kind of a redo, I guess, of what we did last meeting, except in the format that the state of Ohio wanted with these attachments, resolutions to it. Do you want to talk about that, Justin?
Yeah, so the state of Ohio has kind of changed things up this year. Instead of applying for separate grants and asking for pub money from each one, we just put in the programs and the projects that we want, and then they will divvy out the different grant amounts to us by the grants. So that's where it changed a little bit. What we did last meeting was the 5311, which is our normal operations grant, and this one's actually giving us permission to apply for all of the grants, so that way we don't limit ourselves to this one.
But the 5311 is the one that we do every year, right?
Correct. And we're still applying to it. It's just, we're asking for a lot and hoping that they find other monies, you know?
Yeah.
A lot of federal grants and state grants. They're gonna try to do as much as they can. Or at least I will.
That's good.
Further questions? Seeing none, I'd ask for the first reading on Resolution 2220. By title only, please.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, Resolution 2220. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May we have first reading, please?
A resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation by the city of Wilmington for grants through the US DOT Federal Transit Administration, FTA, and the state of Ohio as authorized under federal transit laws and state of Ohio laws, executing a certifications and assurances document, executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon project approval and declaring emergency. I move for the suspension of rules and pure reading Resolution 22 and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
Motion second for suspension of the rules, Resolution 2220. Roll call, please.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation by the city of Wilmington for grants through the US DOT Federal Transit Administration, FTA, and the state of Ohio as authorized under federal transit laws and state of Ohio laws, executing a certifications and assurances document, executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon project approval and declaring emergency. And move for passage, please.
Second.
Motion second for passage. Roll call, please.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2220 passes.
Conclusive legislation, Mr. President. I have, however, had a number of phone calls with regard to something that Service Director Shattaker mentioned earlier, and that is some of the traffic concerns downtown. Can semis make certain turns and so forth? My comment has been to the folks that have called me, I said, "Wait until the O H barrels are down, wait until the codes are down, and then I'm sure the city will be glad to take a look at it." I think particularly line intersection with Sherwood Tree and South, and whether they could, the trucks from Custom Motor Plastics and Champion Bridge Company. And a lot of these came from the agricultural community, and so about trucks, semis coming out feed mill down there and so they're trying to turn on South Street. I said, "Wait until it's all down, then as soon as it is, we see how it's working." So. That has been, that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Leirman. Finance Committee, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items this evening. Our first is three readings on Ordinance 2221 for some supplemental appropriations. There's one. The committee did not meet this evening just because we have more modest amounts versus the more recent expenditures, so it's $12,784.52 from the sewer system fund, just for laboratory equipment, about the plant, just trying to make a staffing regulations. They're down a few staff members, so I don't know if Mr. Dennis Shaker has any clarifiers or anyone that has any questions about that monetary amount. Seeing no questions, I move to give the first reading only on Ordinance 2221 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Albright, seconded by Osborne. First reading of Ordinance 2221. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
I move to suspend the rules regulation and give Ordinance 2221 second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion second for suspension of rules. Roll call, please.
Kirkie?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading, please?
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
I move to pass Ordinance 2221 as read. Second.
Motion second for passage. Roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
Ordinance 2221 carries.
Our second item is two miscellaneous transfers, Ordinance 2222. One is from the Mulberry Project to the water facility for $16,573.24, and the other one is from the Match Mulberry Project to water supplies for $4,317.92. Do any of you gentlemen have any questions about either of those transfers? Lovely, all right. I move to give the first reading only on Ordinance 2222 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Albright, seconded by Osborne. First reading, Ordinance 2222. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May we have first reading, please?
An order making miscellaneous transfers.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give the Ordinance 2222 second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion second for suspension of rules. Roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading, please?
An ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
I move to pass Ordinance 2222 as read.
Second.
Motion second for passage, Ordinance 2222. Roll call, please.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eivlin?
Yes.
Kirkie?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2222 passes.
We have no further items, Mr. President. We look forward to other larger amounts for future finance meetings, so thank you.
Thank you. Judiciary Committee, Mr. Perkey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, you're welcome.
I do have a couple pieces of legislation tonight. I were going to ask for a second, third reading on Resolution 2217. If you remember in our last meeting, Tax Commissioner Jones came in and asked, this is allowing him to bring the tax, to adopt the tax rules, to bring everything up to, to level so that we're not inconsistent amongst our rules and regulations. So I'm happy to go answer any questions that anybody has over that, or any. It's a pretty basic, basic move, but if there are none, then I'll move to suspend the rules and regulations to give Resolution 2217 a second, third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion by Perkey, second by McKay, suspension of rules. May we have roll call, please?
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading?
A resolution authorizing the Tax Commissioner to adopt rules and regulations for income tax collection pursuant to Ohioer Vice Code Section 718.30.
I move to pass Resolution 2217 as read.
Second.
Motion, uh, and second for passage. Roll call, please.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Resolution 2217 passes.
Thank you. Uh, the next thing on my agenda tonight, and this came out of our last judiciary meeting, and I think we've all had been a part of this discussion several times, but there has long been a discussion about whether or not to change the ordinance involving trash cans. And when we adopted the recycling tores, we included some wording in the legislation that would allow for there to be a, you know, a way to keep someone from trespassing into them because recyclables are valuable. Uh, but as it's happened, the, the trash cans, the actual tores themselves, didn't have the, uh, the same protection over that the recycling ones did. So after much discussion, and, you know, I think this is the third time this conversation's come up, we've decided to amend the legislation so that it covers all receptacles, not just recycling. So, and we feel, Brett gave some really good insight about, uh, you know, how it would be easy for police to, to, to handle this, but I think it'll be, it'll be fine consistent with the, with the rest of the legislation. Are there any questions? I know we've kind of had a lot of discussion about this in the past, so I wouldn't give anybody an opportunity to say anything.
I have had a couple citizens call me about this since our judiciary meeting, and they were just really excited that it's finally come to fruition because they, they were the ones that have been talking about it for a very long time, since, since during COVID.
I wouldn't say it's exciting, but I'm happy to.
They were, I mean, you never know what's going to excite somebody, and apparently our trash receptacles having a blanket legislation has excited them. So that made me feel good that these people have been paying attention to what we've been talking about, so.
Well, I think it's, it's important that we're consistent in the wording of our legislation, so. If there's no further discussion, I'll move for the first reading of ordinance 2223.
Second.
Motion by Perkey, second by McKay, first reading ordinance 2223. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May we have first reading, please?
An ordinance amending certain sections in Chapter 925 Records Collection of the Hamiltonified Ordinance.
Thank you. Um, let's do our second and third reading in our next meeting. We'll give ample time if anyone has an objection or discussion they'd like to have, but I don't anticipate much yet, so we'll go ahead and connect anything, so. Uh, the last thing on my agenda tonight is a discussion of council elected officials' leave review. Uh, so we've had this discussion a few times in the past, and the last time we brought it here to the council floor, Councilman Lierman had asked to send this off to the Human Resources to let them do some research for us. So we have that in front of us, and I wanted to make sure all of you had time to review it, and I'm assuming you have. What questions did it bring up? What are your thoughts? You know, I, I don't have a whole lot to add here, but I want to kind of see what the, what the council thinks, so.
It's a reasonable assessment of the councils in the area, and it's a recommendation that would be fine to accept.
Okay. Everybody else having? I know Greg's here, so he's happy to answer any old questions about the methodology behind it, or, you know, how, where the numbers came from, or, uh, it is, I think, one of the most important things that I've learned in this process. I think it's, it's come up several times in our discussion is that you never want to let these things sit for a decade, right? Because what happens is you dig a hole, and then you, you, you want to try to get back there, but it's just a really big ask then, right? So, uh, and I think I appreciated the comments at the end of, hey, every three years, two, three years, come back and just look and, and see what, how things are going, so. What, any, anything, I know, even the audience will have to add anything, any questions? So what we're looking for at this point, we, we had had a first reading of the ordinance. At this point, the discussion tonight was with the hopes of amending or deciding what, where we wanted to land and how to move forward with it. So I didn't necessarily think we needed to push it back down to Judiciary Committee because it's a conversation for everybody to be a part of, so. Are we comfortable with the recommendation of the Human Resources? Is there an argument for or against something different? I kind of want to open the floor up and see what everybody thinks, so.
I appreciate Greg's work on it. I think it's a fair, you know, just going back to the things I thought felt was fair, was reasonable, and obviously we're looking at this for being the next, uh, time to go around as far as.
Always for future reasons, that's right.
Right, could not have it in term raised, so I, I think it's a fair, reasonable recommendation, Greg, and I appreciate your hard work on it.
So the recommendation for the gallery, I don't know, is there a copy over there of the? Okay, uh, so the, the recommendation was to move salary from 3780 to 5354. And that puts about, it's almost half the difference between the, up to the average. Uh, it's a 42% increase, which kind of gets back to what we were saying about you let this sit for a really long time, and it's hard to make those things up. I still think there's value in it hitting hers. Uh, I do think that, you know, as we will see some council turnover in future terms, for sure, uh, I think it would be a good way to entice or attract interest in, in council. But the, it's a big, it's a big jump, and I think Greg's, Greg's work here kind of proved that. So that said, I think we're, are we in agreement that that's, do we want to move forward with? I guess I, I need to ask everybody without taking a vote, do we want to move forward with recommending it at the, you know, pushing it forward at the recommended level? Does that feel like the thing we want to? Did you find anything?
You know what?
It's in the other attachment?
Yeah, but I have it at the end of this, so I didn't have to. Yeah, I can't see what I'm doing because I'm sideways, so I know I could do, you know what?
Just certain.
Oh, yeah, that would be nice, too. It's Jess's fault.
I think that was a 130-page attachment.
Yeah, exactly. So I think it was right about.
There it is, you're touching.
Yep, there it is.
Ta-da!
There you go.
There you go.
And you know, I don't think you break it down by the hour. I think you look at the amount of time and the effort that's involved. Uh, if you can look at it in terms of numbers, you can do anything you want to with numbers, but it's basically going to come down to $100 a week, more or less, or a little over $100. I think for the amount of time that you put in for it, for the responsibility that is involved with it, I think it's fair and, and, and I'm comfortable with it.
It does, there is a, not to change the topic, but one of the things that Greg did bring up was to revisit, I think a lot of the things you could revisit, revisit it on a more regular basis. Just to keep, to keep us in a place where we're keeping all those numbers front of mind, because as we've talked about with, you know, just the city employees right now, you know, we're at a point where it's time to probably do some making up with that, too, and you, you don't ever want to find yourself in a hole trying to catch up, so.
Not a question. Yes, I'm not, I'm going to make sure I understand it correctly. We're looking at other municipalities, not including ours, because then we wouldn't be the low, right? Am I misunderstanding that financially? Would we not be with 37, maybe we would be the low, so is it we were looking at 31 other municipalities, not including our own?
Correct, correct. We did not, we weren't included in that. I was only looking at the Minnesota.
And some councils only meet once per month, for instance, Hillsborough, and I know that for a fact. I had a discussion with Mayor Harsha down there about the responsibility level of their, of their people that are elected officials down there as well.
Well, part of that, and I, I appreciate that Greg and his team broke it out between charter and statutory, because as a statutory city, we're, we're bound by a higher vice code than how we meet, so we don't have that flexibility. We, we can't just pass a amendment to our charter and decide to meet half the time. Uh, so it, it is a, we are bound by, by those rules, so I appreciate this breakdown. I was surprised that there wasn't as much, I thought there would be more difference, but it really kind of bears out about the same.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing, if I'm.
I, I'm in total agreement with everything that's been said here. But I think it's worth pointing out that this, as Councilman Lierman stated, this doesn't take effect for two years. And if you look at annual inflation at eight and a half percent, which is running right now, the buying power that's actually 16% lower than what we'd be giving them later. So, uh, and that again argues for the fact that it needs to do up that frequently.
Yeah, so to, to that point, I, I think it's something that should be discussed every, every term, every four, every two, four years, to, to not let yourself get to that point. Um, we all acknowledge this isn't a race for us. Uh, and Bill has made it very clear that he does not intend to, to do another term on council.
This is it.
My future is uncertain, everyone's seat is uncertain, so, um, you know, obviously there are, uh, this is, this is our best guess. Uh, it may be that, and one of the things that I was always against with the idea of hers was that it kept moving, uh, so it becomes a moving target. And I mean, that's, Don, you were on council way back when, that was, uh, one, that was kind of one of the, the things back, Mark, I think you were as well. It was, uh, it, it just adjusted every year to that, but it's a, it's a volatile number that is changing a lot these days. So, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable with pushing for with the recommendations from our Human Resources Director and letting future councils decide if they want to go for it. Can I go ahead?
This number seems reasonable to me. I guess I said it in the first number. It seems reasonable, but I also got to add, we're not working on city council for an hourly wage.
Right.
You know, we're, we're doing this as a service to the people.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we still got to keep in mind, we're, we're not earning an hourly wage, we're doing a service for the people. So as long as we keep that in mind, bring it in, you know?
Yeah, I, there, there becomes a, and I shared this with you earlier, you were at the last meeting, we talked about it. When I was, what brought this whole conversation up, and I think I had it with Mr. Shattaker a little bit, too, was I, when we knew some council members were leaving last time, I was kind of, hey, have you ever thought about it, have you ever had any interest in this? Asking some people about it, and like, I just kept hearing, it's a lot of time, it doesn't really compensate you. And I was like, well, it is definitely public service, right? It is, it is, it is a service, but, uh, that was one of the, one of the things that I kept hearing over and over again, so. Always bring it up here for a vote, let people decide we want to, want to change it or make changes. I think the idea of revisiting regularly is, is probably going to help, provide some clarity, so.
I, I would agree with that, and we do have an enormous amount of responsibility on us, uh, financially as well. I mean, heaven, God forbid if the city were to fall on anything. There, there is a lot of stuff that is, that if something goes wrong, it's on us. So that's also something to bear and keep in mind, that, you know, we just don't sit up here and do this and then go home. I mean, there, there are consequences to what we do up here that later on down the road could, you know, there could be a lot of parting. So I, I just, I want to keep that in mind, but yes, Don, you are correct that this is public service, and that's what I'm all about. That's why I sit in this chair, because I believe in it, and anyone that knows me knows that, and that's why I do this, because I want to help my community. And I want to make sure that I'm doing right by my community as the community has done right by me, so that's, that's just something to keep in mind. But I, I would agree with the assessment. I think it's, I think it's fair, and then we revisit it as time marches on, because if we don't, like Councilman Perkey said, we'll get behind just as we've done now, and it'll just get worse and worse and worse. So I, I think we're doing the right thing by, by looking at it and going by this assessment, so thank you, Greg.
So it's been at this rate for, what, 12 years?
Oh, it's, ever since what?
So I, I think the, what I, what I'm gathering is that we want to, you know, just amend current legislation to, to this number, so. Brett, procedurally, if I could ask you, uh, what would be the best way to do that, just to?
Bring it back.
Bring it back and come back for a second after it's been edited? Okay. So we'll make that happen for our next meeting. That works for everybody, and we'll, uh, continue discussions from there. I'm still in no hurry, so we can, we can have, no need to pile more than one reading on it at a time. We'll still have another month or so to discuss it, so. If anybody else has any questions, please, by all means, let me know. Anything else? Seeing none, then I'll say that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody, for indulging me, and I appreciate the discussion.
Thanks for a lot of hard work, uh, from a lot of people on the project, and thank you, Mr. Perkey. Public Works Enterprise Committee, Mr. Snar.
Okay, Mr. President, we have three resolutions, three readings each, starting with Resolution 2221, which we're accepting $1 million gift, $1 million toward wastewater treatment plant from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Yeah, any questions?
I appreciate Rick's assessment. Spend it now before they change the law.
If there are no questions or concerns, I move to give first reading only of Resolution 20, 2221 by title only.
Second.
And the motion was Snar, second by Albright, first reading, Resolution 2221. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please?
A resolution accepting a funding award from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Section 594 program in support of the Wilmington Wastewater Treatment Plant Project, authorizing the Director of Public Service to execute documents in support of said funding and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give Resolution 2221, second, third reading by title only. Second.
Motion, second for suspension of rules. Roll call, please.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution accepting a funding award from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Section 594 program in support of the Wilmington Wastewater Treatment Plant Project, authorizing the Director of Public Service to execute documents in support of said funding and declaring an emergency.
I move to pass Resolution 2221 as read.
Second.
Motion, second for passage. Roll call, please.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2221 passes.
All right, next, Resolution 2222. It's a resolution to accept $500 from the Clinton Stream Keepers in the Source Water Protection Department. As part of the cycle advance that they give out, we've received money from them before, we appreciate it. We accept it. Objections, concerns, questions? If not, I move to give first reading only of Resolution 2222 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Snar, second by McKay, first reading Resolution 2222. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please?
A resolution accepting a gift by the Clinton Stream Keepers from the Stur Frederick Amliat Fund with a City of Wilmington Source Water Protection Program and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations, give Resolution 2222, uh, second, third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, second for suspension of the rules. Roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar? Snar?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Osborn?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third read, please?
A resolution accepting a gift by the Clinton Stream Keepers from the Stur Frederick Anliat Fund for the City of Wilmington Source Water Protection Program, and declaring an emergency.
I move to pass Resolution twenty-two, twenty-two as read.
Second.
Motion, second, for passage, Resolution twenty-two, twenty-two, roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Osborn?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Any questions?
Thank you. Resolution twenty-two, twenty-two passes.
Just, just on that last resolution, I just want to take a second, recognize Fred Anliat, he was a longtime professor at college, did a lot in the arborium there, just a good guy, dedicated, knew his trees, too.
Nathan Hale was a, a big part of that group as well.
Yeah. Did that start when Kennedy Jr. came?
When what?
When Bobby Kennedy Jr. came.
Well, he came as a result of the stone quarry situation they were trying to do out in the township out there, so. That's how, obviously, I was part of that.
Okay, yeah, so I actually drove him to the airport.
Yeah, yeah.
He kept identifying every bird we saw. Sorry, I'm going to be professor here for a second. I remember one quote he gave in the auditorium over there, and he said, "If you see, you show me pollution, and I'll show you a subsidy." Which I thought was really interesting. I still use that. All right, enough of that, sorry. Class is not quite dismissed yet, so Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three. This is emergency repairs down in front of the State Highway Control where they've been experiencing repeated backups with the sewer line. The lines collapsed, manholes are in terrible shape. We need to act quickly. There's a, we're going to have to dig down fourteen feet deep. And of course, there are time constraints because of the construction, and so we went to three companies for bids, and two turned us down. We're going to go with the one, fifty-eight thousand dollars to fix the manholes in the lines.
Yeah, there's one question, we won't be digging, you know, mine need, so I'll go in from the anthole to do that. So I was part of the benefit of doing the, with the line, that you don't have to dig until it was, every, this, uh, project out there.
They tell students, never correct me in class. All right, thank you, so, so we need to get this fixed quickly, so, we need to, for emergency repair.
I, I don't, well, go ahead.
My only question was, the fifty-eight thousand's for the sewer repair, but there will probably be a change order for the paving?
No.
That's what you just said.
Right, so these roads will all be entered through the manhole, so we're going to have to dig it off. So they might have to adjust the status slightly, but, but it'll be two, three days, because they'll be doing that work, and it's the, um, paving people won't be able to break that area during that time.
Rick, is there, while we're at this, is there a way to inspect any other lines going down through there to make sure that we're not going to have to dig up any more pavement, and we're not going to have any surprises once we lay all this asphalt? It's going to be great and wonderful, and then all of a sudden, as Brian smiles?
It's silly. Yeah, um...
Move on.
The, so when the, when the project was designed, I wasn't in this position yet, so. They looked at some of the lines, not all the lines, and actually, I worked here, so, um, and to do it, to do this, now, it would take the time that they had to pave yet to just cover the whole thing, because that...
I just, I just wanted to ask.
It's difficult, it, yeah.
Rick, there's a picture of that up there, if you want to show real quickly where it is, because this is real helpful, I think.
Right, so, manhole is a problem already here. The line itself runs from Roger Prunten Peak, over about here, so, um...
And the way we found out about it was State Highway Control?
Right, they kept asking.
Was experiencing a lot of backups.
Wow.
Yeah, it is just the last two months, so, it wasn't obvious before, at least not from a book round. But they, the, um, the company got a, um, rent, and they're going to get to us, they freaked it, so, normally, so. We were lucky that they probably had a gas station, or something went wrong, but they had it all clean, so it's good that, um, yeah, I'm lucky that part of it anyway.
Any other questions? All right, if not, we'll give first reading only on Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, and just by title only.
Second.
Motion by Snar, second by Perky, first reading Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to enter into contract, including any and all ensuing change orders for emergency repairs to a certain sewer line on Roundback Avenue, without formal bidding and advertising due to a real and present emergency, and declaring an emergency.
I move to spend the rules and regulations, give Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, second, third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, uh, for suspension of rules and regulations, Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, roll call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Osborn?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third read, please?
A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to enter into contract, including any and all ensuing change orders for emergency repairs to a certain sewer line on Roundback Avenue, without formal bidding and advertising due to a real and present emergency, and declaring an emergency.
I move to pass Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three as read.
Second.
Motion, second, for passage, roll call, please.
Osborn?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three passes.
And then just finally, we did have a discussion on possibility of stormwater credits, where people that reduce the amount of land that is impermeable would possibly get credits. Been good discussion with Eric Green, who's here as well. There are some practical issues with it that we discussed, and we didn't really come to an agreement. We decided to sort of table it and discuss it. Councilman Perky had reached out to a couple cities, and one got back and still waiting for the other one, so we're just going to sit on this one for a while. Questions? All right, nothing further, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Snar. Under reports, we do have the income tax report for March two thousand twenty-two. What is your pleasure?
It would be accepted as presented.
Second.
Motion, second, to accept the income tax report, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Impose? Income tax report is accepted. Now, we will open the meeting to the public. Anyone wishing to address council, please come forward, state your name and address, and keep your comments as brief as possible.
Mr. President, I would like to say, we had another giant person that passed, was Willard Lane. He was a dentist here in town, for those that did not know him, a wonderful businessman, rhetarian, and he almost made it to a hundred, but he didn't, but he was very engaged with this community and loved it deeply, and so I wanted to make mention of Willard, because he, he was, he was one of the great rocks of Wilmington. He was also our oldest living doctor in Clinton County, so, and I remember him saying that, and that was, that was kind of a neat moment when we kind of talked the history of Wilmington doctors, so, but he would be greatly missed.
Good golfer, too.
Excuse me?
He was a good golfer, too.
Yes, he was. We, we know a little about that, don't we?
He shot his age, up into his eighties.
Did he?
No, he reminded me of that. He said, spend those dollars wisely.
All right, any other comments?
Yes.
Yes.
May sixteen, Brad Reynolds will be joining us as his new HR Director.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other bombshells?
I couldn't have him retired. We've got to keep you working.
Brad Reynolds is a well-respected man, formerly Director of Cape May, and I believe he'll do a wonderful job, though. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'd ask for motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Sherman actually was...
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, it was two things.
She had barretrails.
She was a barreter.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
There, where you doing?
So, it, um, it was called day yesterday, but then it's all...
I don't mean to have any time, sir. It's only like twenty thousand.
Driving this morning, well, it's...
Yeah, right, right.
Ready to sit back up there?
Didn't your van late?
It's hard not to say so.
Thank you.
I do. One time help, one time. As well as I can, and we'll see you again. Hey, Mary Kay.
Hi, gentlemen, how are you?
Take care. See you. So, yeah, it was nice meeting you. Great.
Why are you running?
No, you never asked first, you voted last. I did, I did present for driving, and I did. Mark doesn't ask for them, you know? I don't need the money right now, but I just want to work it out, and I, you said I can't, it's very expensive.
I told him, I'm going to give him that a check and go.
So what do you want to our personal organization?
Well, I just, we need to, like we talk about, okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, they, they give the, the...
I'm glad to bring back, uh...
To put it together.
Just like...
Seashells or something.
That's not going to be...
Oh, just a quick one.
But I told you.